Orange and. I never colored mine either.
I get together with my people from high school and they'll go. And we just, when you stop calling, one district called it here. I don't color my hair.
Well. Is all that natural? Yeah, he's, he's just.
He's starting to get a little gray, but he's mid seventies too.
Yeah.
And what a head of hair. I would love to have that in here. I said, you're the one that's supposed to have the bald spot in the back, not me.
We good? All the city, state, the city council made an order, start with plunge allegiance.
Plunge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We'll get started right away with the approval of tonight's agenda.
So.
Motion by Mary.
Second.
Second by John. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. We'll move us to our consent calendar, which is the minutes of our previous meeting and payment of bills. Which by Doug. Second by Ron. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. Move us to item number four, and that's to open our public hearing for our two thousand twenty-two final budget property tax levy. I guess I know.
I did give everybody a paper copy of the budget as well. It's a little easier to look at. So just, I guess, for the, you know, the public hearing portion of this, you will have a little PowerPoint up here. So this is similar format to what we've utilized the last few years, but, you know, projected tax rate information, tax capacity information, some of our operating cost changes and one-time budget items. So that tax capacity, you can see dollars or one point oh seven percent based with the proposed property tax levy that we're looking at on the final budget here tonight. Tax rate, you know, comes in at seventy-two point nine three six. Last year it was seventy-two point nine two nine. Tax levy, basically proposing eleven thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollar levy increase, which is at one point oh eight. That's down from the two point nine one preliminary budget or levy. Tax rate. Again, you can see where we were going back seventeen to two thousand seventeen, and we were at ninety-two, went to ninety-one, ninety, dropped down to column seventy-three across the board, just under seventy-three. So we've been staying pretty, pretty consistent on our tax rate, largely because of the net some tax capacity growth each year. So revenue changes, we did get by formula, just over sixteen thousand dollar increase in LGA for two thousand twenty-two. I think everybody's aware, the fire department was successful in getting a FEMA grant for SCBA's in the amount of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand six sixty-seven. So we do have the acquisition of those in the two thousand twenty-two budget. Tax increment numbers, which is largely a flow-through, ninety percent flow-through for mill townhomes show up in the budget this year. And then small cities assistance, which is a, you know, one-time road maintenance type item. There are those that would love to have it every year, but we'll take what we can get when we can get it. Increases for existing services as far as expenditures. You know, we've got the three percent cost of living increase built into, into the budget. Health insurance increased seven point seven percent. You know, for single, you know, that's all city cost for family. It's a seventy-five, twenty-five split. Auditing services, I shared with you the, that Mayor Porter Nelson is no longer going to be doing audits for the city. So we are there has been working to solicit proposals from auditing firms. We have two. They are higher than Mayor Porter Nelson. And a lot of the communicate, a lot of the feedback from places that you talked to, a lot of people are, firms are in the same boat that they are. You know, where they're struggling to get adequate staff to be able to do it. So attorney fees, we've got Kyra Lad, Quinn Libin Hughes, the Quinn Libin Hughes side of that is going to be higher this year than it wa- or next year than it was last year. We'll have that stuff on the agenda on the twenty-eighth. And I think both of them plan to or at least Joel, I guess I forgot to call Kyra, to come on the twenty-eighth, but Joel will be here on the twenty-eighth. Twenty twenty-two is election year. So there's expense associated with that that is in the two thousand twenty-two budget. Supplies, utilities, you know, a lot of the non-personnel related items in the budget. We basically look back at where we're, where we've been at in previous years and try to predict the future as best we can. One-time proposals, you know, we've got, you know, some turnout gear for the fire department. Single audit because of the amount of federal dollars that come through, you have five thousand dollars in there for that single audit. Riot gear, body cams, evidence room update at the police department. Fire truck, the equipment truck, we have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the, in the permanent improvement fund for acquisition of the equipment truck. Dower Lake Playground Equipment and Roof on the Pavilion. Wilson Park to put in some irrigation out there to fend off the sandbars. And then Lincoln Park Playground, which is a carry-forward item from two thousand twenty-one, is in there. That is basically the end of what we've got there. You know, as I said, we've got the budget here. Don't know how you want to go through it. You know, they basically talked about some budget stuff three weeks ago. The two point nine one downs to the one point eight. You know, personnel changes, family insurance down to single insurance. Little over one percent. The bulk of the budget is identical to what we had at the preliminary with those modifications. I don't know if there's any other public comment, but if you want to close the public hearing and move forward with our discussion.
Yes, Mark's the one that lives in the city. So we'll close the, I guess that means, so we'll close the public hearing and we'll move to item number five, and that would be to consider adopting Resolution eighteen fifty-nine, which is the two thousand twenty-two property tax levy. Motion by Ron, second by Mary. Is there any discussion or comments, questions? And I guess not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Carry. And now we'll move us to item number six and but I got it. And that would be to consider approval of the two thousand twenty-two budget.
Make a motion to approve the budget. As presented.
Motion by Mary.
I'll second it.
Second by Roy. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Can you hear me now, Tara? No. Barely not. She's ignoring me. And we just basically need to pass a resolution to accept that additional, those additional dollars. I believe it's dealt with, what's on it.
Thanks. Hello, everyone. We met November twelfth third. We talked about, we've been talking about a tax payment policy that has been presented to the EVA from the Wadena County Wide Policy Task Force here. Proposed amendment for all cities within the county to consider adopting policy as well as something that aligns with the county of Wadena, as well as something that would be an actual policy that these communities such as like a Sabika and Monaga that maybe wouldn't have the capacity to put together a policy available to them to utilize when developments come their way. So it has been presented to the EVA Board or Republican Forum Committee. To get a little closer, there's some other areas that have been needed like to, or they'd like to consider including in there, such as like in the appeals process, et cetera, and just make sure it's what fits this community. And so that is happening. There's a committee for, or committee we've been scheduled, and so more to come on that. Ultimately, what would happen with that is that committee would then present it to the EVA Board, or the EVA Board, and then make recommendations to the city council to consider it for adoption at the city level. So a lot of stuff before it gets to you, but it'll be thoroughly processed through. But I should want Apple House. So I thought that Congressman Austin is working on a legislation that would be adopted by the state should they improve it in this year funding. No. And then we are not anticipating any additional tours this year, which is just fine, but the building is freezing cold. Something last time we did a tour, I'm pretty sure we might post it, post it off, and it's been here. So we, we have, has a very positive feedback that they are very pleased with the idea of separating out the larger construction project from the planning piece of it. And so that is what we did this year. And a lot of support from both the House and the Senate side. So more to come on that. There should be a time coming up here that potentially we'd have to speak with the Capitol. Or more personal conversations, maybe some letters of support, that could be sent there, emails. You can sort of do that anytime you want, actually, but I haven't gotten the official, now is a good time to do everything that we're posting. But anytime you want, I'll reach out to legislators and tell them what I should do. And then the board is actually revisioning and of what would be on the initial news initially when the committee, we did that disengaging process, was done, that was all going to be a nonprofit use. And they're considering section proportions of that building that could potentially be used for, for profit business, which would actually lessen the amount of money that you would have come for, or and also lessen the amount of money that would be funded for. So if you were to section off floor number three for cut into a particular hotel, which would then be a private use, that would not come as part of the total project cost. That would be a separate cost for a private business, which could actually make the project a little bit more easily to digest when we're fundraising and writing your financial basis. So it's kind of some stuff that's going on with the Fed. It's good to know. So it's good to stop and take a look and step back and make sure you're going on the right path. We are also working on hiring a fundraiser that specializes in historic buildings to promote and place the property as well as the artifacts that would maybe be considered to be in a, for the cinema. Safe Rose School, we did get accepted to apply for the full application, so around three hundred and ninety thousand. They just extended the deadline to June fourteen, so that will be going in. And hopefully, those three projects around the school, make it safer for students to walk the store. Downtown redevelopment plan has kicked off. We had one meeting. The group is out checking down other communities that they would like to see our downtown potentially modeled after. And also maybe what they don't like about those downtowns. So the way it looks, the way it feels, the way it smells, you know, taking pictures. And then our next meeting is next week, and we're going to share what we found. And then, you know, the next session we're doing a ton of data research. And we're going to present that to us as far as the current hometown towns are working now and kind of where, where division for the future on what small towns are going to aspire in the future. Single family homes, we didn't even talk about the nature. They are interested in partnering to market those lots. There has been a developer that is interested in potentially working with us. I've also heard of another that would like to potentially work with us on the single family homes and those twin homes. One would like to do both, and one would potentially like to focus on the single family homes. So it could be a really great group of developers to put that going. So there's progress going on there. We have a committee talk about the incentives that could go with that lot and one with a lot. Way to Industries, I don't know if you've heard, they're getting they are in a new organization, our feedback from their kind of work with them, in Pine River or in other areas that they built in from an economic or a city standpoint. And then, you know, from to some of the or that, it's been a positive experience there. So it sounds like they're in the waiting to be ready for the committee. I just touched base with them today. They are moving forward. Everything seems to be going as planned. And hopefully, in January, they'll still be able to get everything up and running there. They've been really happy with the amount of applicants that they've had and the quality of those applicants. So that's something we should be proud of to, in our areas that we do have that available human capital to support their needs. Yeah, it's really exciting. Really happy that they chose this community. Doing some grant research for the community center. There's two, those are large, they're five hundred and ten dollars. And then there's a one point five state that could potentially align with it. So we've got to go out So we've got to know which direction and the combo that and suggest to go or kind of other conversations that are going with it, that there are potential grant opportunities out there to help with that renovated. Both do require a match though, so there's more to it than just giving them free money. Let's see, Carmel Pines is moving on. They should be ready to sell their traditional third units this spring. And coming in January, we're going to be on 2022 for the next year, five year strategic plan up there. And that is all I have. Just a little bit of hazard issues.
Yeah, sorry we got mine out late. We had our meeting today instead of a week ago like from Baltimore, but short agenda today. One, one thing to note was we did have a resident who lives on the corner of Forest Street and Fourth Avenue, northeast. Requested some city help paying for redoing his sidewalk. His claim is that the, that when we plow snow, we plow it all from the north end to the south end of that street because of the parking lot, the parking by the community center and the parking lot. The community center and the school use. However, he does have a boulevard, so it's not likely that, that the sidewalk is, he claims it's pocked up from salt, but it's unlikely that it would come from the road. And talking again with the street guys, they do, they plow over there, but they do leave some space between, you know, they don't even go to the curb because they, they end up hauling that away later. So he requested that the city pay for redoing the porcelain sidewalk. Pub Works Commission suggested that we denied the request. And I don't, I don't think we need any action on that. We didn't pursue any, any action at the community level. So the next item was we updated on the wastewater treatment plant. On December 7th, which was Tuesday of last week, we started treating water. We started treating, but the plant is not substantially complete. It's still got a ways to go. And if you guys remember the Friday of last week, it would have been December 10th and would have been substantial. They, they did not meet that. There's still, all the buildings are up. The processes are, are there, but certain things like a bathroom, bathrooms are not done. And they don't even have the sinks, the drains plugged, they're, you know, piped for the sinks. The guys are in the office, but then they're, they're sharing it with people in and out. Next week, the floors in the office have to be painted, so they'll have to move out of that office and move all their stuff to work in another room. So Gerald and I met with, we, we had a phone conversation with the lead engineer on that. But today we requested that, that we be provided with details of what needs to be done and how they intend to get it done. And in what time period. Later, after that phone conversation, I also met with Dell site. And we went over some of the concerns that, that he has. The onsite engineer happened to be there, so then I did have a short meeting with her as well. And she'll be sending out an email to, to us with some of the, the items that we raised and also hopefully giving, providing some details once we see that. We hope to get our story together and then meet with, with the contractor and the engineer so we can we'd like to get our guys in there and operating without, without them being bothered by construction going on or you know, we'd like them to be able to use the bathroom in the building rather than walking across the street shop. So we are treating water, but it's going well. However, there's still a lot to, lot to get done. Any questions? Okay, we had a, yesterday we had a meeting regarding AMI meters. It was mostly about the, how to use the software that goes along with them. We do have a lot of the equipment and stuff in, in possession. And we're, we're having another meeting in January or February. We'll touch on software a little more. The guys have all got access to it now, so we can get on and play around with it. But we have some meters installed. We can already see what, what's going on with those meters. So it's kind of, it's, it's kind of a new tool. We can, we can see a residence, you know, high point, low point. So we're, we're moving forward. We hope to get most of it in this, or most of the electric meters in this winter. Still do have a, there's still quite a lead time on, on some of the other meters, but as we know, the 23rd will start reading timing use and so we're, we're moving ahead.
The 3rd or 2023?
2023.
There's a difference.
Yeah. So anyway, but that was, that was a good meeting. It was good training. It was said in the Public Works Commission meeting, it was, it was a little overwhelming, but in a good so many things that we realized that we can do on that stuff. So we're, we're excited to get that. And then last thing I'll talk about is the water quality thing we had talked about on the south side. We, we had addressed it briefly last, or two weeks ago where you guys got that email. I did reach out to, to the resident that had the complaint. And so we, we are going to start flushing hydrants probably this week. It could be tomorrow. We'll see if we can flush on the south side, get some of that stuff moving towards the end and get it flushed out. I also asked her to, to keep me updated if, if it continues or if it goes away or if it, you know, whenever it comes back. I know Doug had brought something up before that email. And I'd ask Doug the same. And we also have a, a resident also on Dakota Avenue that, that stays in touch with me. He hasn't particularly bad. Oh, good. Yeah. So, yeah, we hope that Minnesota Avenue would improve it, but wasn't surprised that it might, you know, it's one of those things that might get worse before it gets better. But we still plan to, to flush some hydrants and hopefully that will clear it up for good. That's all I have unless anybody else has any, anybody has any questions.
She's no longer employed by the City of Staples. That basically is what I'll leave it at for today.
I can ask one more question to the council. Is apparently that the council knows about this. Why don't you figure it out in the public forum? What did you get your information about it? And and why aren't you hearing it more?
I'll answer that. I guess some of us were aware of it. How did I get that?
The woman that presents up to me, do you know?
No, I, I contacted the council members to make them aware of. No, there, there was no decision on their part. That was my decision.
It's an item of public interest. You can't go behind the public's back.
And we're not. And I, I responded to your email, Mark, asking you if you wanted to make a, a formal request, a data request. I would respond appropriately. So.
So I would just do, I mean, it's solely the council's decision. It's Gerald's decision. That's, but you can't, the council should be learning it at a meeting. They should now be learning about it privately. Well, yeah, but to be told.
There's, there's, there's a process that's afforded to, to employees. And until that process.
The council may have discussed it. Well, it doesn't matter how much you discuss it or not. It's just that the council heard about it. Friday night and it was not, it was not available to the public. So I guess I know, so every time a police officer parks department person. And I, we were not, we never have had, you know, formally talked to me that I don't not grasping why it's any other. Yeah, but the council has no direction over that position. We have no charter. We have Well, exactly. So I mean, how, I, I guess that you just answered your question. I mean, the whole town wants to buy it. Yeah. So, so help me, the whole town wanted to buy it from Facebook. And what was going on on Facebook? It's not, it's not what's actually happening. And man, I guess whatever, we can debate it. I don't understand the problem. Because it is, like I said, it's not a force of decision to debate. It doesn't matter if it's a decision or not. It's something that's of interest to the council. And it's coming through, not unright from the cage. Not necessarily if it's coming through our, I mean, we just notified through our, I mean, what's different than any other, on any other status of an employee. If Gerald sends out a notification, you must tell us that employee from the city staple, what? Why is this different than any other employee? I don't care if it's a department head. It's, it's we don't oversee that position. If it's, whether it's hard for him to do it or whatever, I just don't try.
Yeah. And, and, and Mark, you know, when, when you'd sent me that email and I, I did respond to it. I, I haven't received a written data request. No, no, no.
Are you purposely not, not understanding? Well, there's no, if you were to know every way that it's I'm just talking about one person. I'm talking about everybody. Talking about this one situation. What, why, why this one situation? Why is it so important? Why is it being brought up? Because apparently the city is not talking about it. It's involving them. So I would think that isn't any council's job. And so now we do all normal. So everything is covered. That the rest of the public doesn't know? So we don't actually have to be in this discussion. We have this council meeting. I know, I know more, more than the public knows. We made it on Facebook. So I'm making assumptions here, Mark. You know, you're making assumptions. We know more than they think we know. But I'm asking, why is, why don't you try to translate this? You know, we can discuss this. Why, why wouldn't you be interested in this? Aren't you a council member? Should you know what's going on in here in this?
Right, I, I, I informed the council members of my decision. It is my decision, not, I wasn't asking them. Basically providing them with the information.
If she's old boy, I don't, I don't have to be ready to know. If you know anything about it, you can't, you can't just have a deal with a boy and this is wrong. Shout out to the highest mountain and, you know, what else? She's old boy. She is very beta price. All, all Gerald put in there to me was that Chris, hold on, we're sure this didn't stay.
It was true. As, as I said, the, an employee is afforded certain due process. And until, until that time period of that due process is up, the, you know, the only information that I will provide is, is information that's requested via the Data Practices Act. And at that point, I will consult with our labor attorney to find out what information I can share. You know, once, once, once that process is done, Mark.
Yeah, that's the way you do it. You know, like school board, it's all the time. If there's, if there's an accusation or something against an employee, they go into a pay announcement and they go into the post-学习 card. The school board, you can't compare it to the school board because the school board operates differently than we do and that. That if you again, look at the city charter, that's slowly, Gerald doesn't have to tell us. You've got to tell, tell everybody. If you read the charter, it's so correct for that position. So the school, yeah, school board, school board, they approve hiring, firing, they approve everything that goes on. It's that, we can't compare us to school without, you know, meeting. I, I don't know what this, there was nothing that was, I, I we do. No, I don't share that. I don't, I don't need to, we know about it. You told us. The public, it seemed like Gerald said that there's also, there's a period that when, when, in, in, in our, that it's not complete yet. There's still, there's still a appeal process. There's still those processes that go through that. It's not done yet. So why do we, well, then, so why do we come to say we don't have a director or a person that, but we do. And that's, we talked about that. No, no, not as, not as a team. No, we have. I mean, that not as Why not? Are you giving other employees? We, we don't have, the time is right. The time isn't right yet. We're not there yet. I mean, you don't have, you don't have your We have an interim partner that did it. So right now, it's, it's doing it. Well, we have to have somebody in charge. Somebody there. Gerald called somebody in charge. And right now that's until we are done with this process, then we'll talk about it. We haven't, I mean, so two weeks ago, three weeks ago, the conversation would have been different than tonight. I mean, nothing new would came like to anybody. No, but at least, I, but at least the public would know about that. I've had a lot of people calling and asking. They're calling and asking. The lights are probably going to park and to be last in, the light is probably going to park.
The information on the, on the light show was put out on the Facebook, city Facebook page, Discover Staples, you know, those, those different venues to make people aware that that was not happening. So. Yeah, not the website. Yeah, so.
Okay, we'll move on to city administration report.
Negotiations. We are actively negotiating with IBW, LELS and AFSP. If all of the stars align, maybe we'll have something two weeks from now. I don't know what the odds of that are, but we'll continue on our quest to reach a settlement with the three, on the three labor agreements. Safe Road School, Melissa kind of updated you on that. We're working on getting the full application submitted in January. Have had some discussions with both Liquid Health System and also the school district. Partnership opportunities up at the community center as we look at the referendum. That'll be coming up next November. That'll be coming up next November as part of the general election. And related to that, you know, just to let everybody know, I have appointed Lacy as acting community center director, so it was on my list. And. She's basically holding down the fort at the at the community center. We have great cooperation from Leroy at the school with helping to deal with boiler license and things like that, so. Think some of those partnership opportunities are looking promising. Airport fuel pump, I'm very happy to report that that's in. After a long wait. Well, it finally came and the skins, you know, on the side of the fuel pump were damaged, so they had to reorder those, so. But they got that in last. Thursday, Thursday or Friday, I can't remember which which day, so. And that's up and running, so that will be very nice going forward. And we have closed on both the Falk and Crosnell houses over between Eighth and Ninth Street. And start to see some activity, trying to get that stuff cleaned up, so. You know, at a minimum, all the stuff in the yard will be gone here yet this year. And that is all I have, you know, we have another meeting on the on the twenty eighth. And to look at, you know, fee schedule, part-time wages, hopefully, union stuff. Hopefully, it'll be a fair quick meeting, I don't, everybody around between Christmas and New Year's. Fine to see you then, so unless anybody has any questions, that's all I have.